May 12 at 7:30 PM. At this point, still virtually. You have public comments. Hopefully, some of you, I know some of us have a hard time getting our new folder in place online, but you do have everything. There was nothing new in the folder today when Dr. Adley checked it. And if you have any problems, keep in contact with Jeff Adams, who has been a lifesaver on this stuff. So everyone received the emails I sent this weekend, so we should be full with that. It will be posted up on the website, and it has been sent to Chairman Zagrowski, as we discussed, so he could also distribute to the Board of Finance. With that, we will move on to continue discussion on the fiscal year 2021 budget request from the Board of Finance. Just a few quick notes before we do that. I think you all should have received my email. Chairman Zagrowski has canceled the Board of Finance meeting for tomorrow. He has indicated that the BOE work session, which was scheduled for May 12, still is on for May 12, and that they will be discussing the idea of a non-lapsing account at that meeting. So we need to get to them, kind of our budget thoughts by May 6. I did send them what we had last week, but I think if there's any clarification in this meeting, I certainly will compile it and pass it on to him so he can distribute to his board. And I think that's kind of all the housekeeping things I have at this moment. I'll hand it over to Dr. Adley.
Good afternoon, everyone, to my board members and also to the public who may be looking in. So I sent this afternoon a revised budget memorandum to the Board of Education, to the members of the public. It should be upposted. If it's not, it will be momentarily posted for you to go live. And it's a revised budget memorandum from last week. Essentially, what it does, it takes Mr. Ritchie's idea, which was to simplify the memorandum and put it into essentially two proposals. One that deals with a non-recurring account, a non-lapsing account, and one that does not. So the first proposal is simply a reflection of like what you would consider last week, 2A, and proposal number 2 is 2B. So in essence, it sort of lays out, well, if you were going to lay out those reductions in the first place, just sort of lay them out in this orientation. So that's all it does. It does, the only change in this is there was a one additional vehicle that we put into, that we could defer in capital out of the two vehicles. But beyond that, it speaks to the same issues, it's just rearranged just a little bit differently, just for simplicity purposes more than anything. So what's going to be helpful ultimately, I think, for myself and for the board, we have to respond to the Board of Finance in terms of the reductions that we've been making. So we would need to be leaving, and hopefully leaving this meeting with a direction for the superintendent of the administration on behalf of the board to say, this is, these are the reductions that we're prepared to make, whatever they happen to be, whether the board agrees. The board can sort of look at these line items and agree or not agree, that's fine. But ultimately, we need to sort of go back to the Board of Finance to say, even though that they have not taken a position on the non-lapsing account, capital account, this would be the board's decision whether you do or whether you do not. And we either meet the mark or come short of the mark, depending on which models we actually choose here and what decisions are made to the board. But I do think it's important that we come out of this meeting with some direction as to what we're communicating directly with the Board of Finance. I believe it was May 6 that they, that we had that direction.
So I know, Mrs. Ritchie.
Is it okay to ask some questions now? Or do you want to?
Sure.
I just, I was hoping there's a paragraph that we, it appears twice in the document, and it's the paragraph that starts, if we needed to reach the high-end guidance. And I just, I think based on the fact that we've collapsed into just two scenarios, I think that obviously the dollar amount, the further, the further reductions coming out of extracurricular programs and staffing, we wouldn't need all of that. I think it's about 1.9 million in total. So I just, I was wondering what the thought was with that paragraph, because it seems like it's more than we would need under either scenario. So we could just have clarification on that?
Yes, under scenario one, we would, under scenario one, we would not need it, is correct. But under scenario two, we would be sure, we would need, we would need it. So you could take it out of one place if you wanted to do that, that's on page seven. I think that's what you're talking about, Ms. Ritchie.
I am, I am. And so we would need it under the second scenario, where there's no non-lapsing fund, but the dollar amounts are still, I think, more than what we would need to reach the goal, if I'm reading it right. Because...
I think, I think when he, when Dr. Adley is talking about those, he's recommending changes up to those amount, not changes in the total amount. So it wouldn't be the additive of 200,460 and 1.28. He's saying we would need to make decisions up to those amounts.
Okay. But I'm just, I guess where I'm going is, is this in order of where we would start with the cuts in other words, are we going to start with athletics, are we going to start with programs, and then we're going to go to staffing? Or could it come out of any of those three?
Any of the three of, like staffing?
So if we needed to do the further cuts under the second scenario, and we needed to find additional cuts, how are we saying, we would, we would look at all three of those? Or are we going to look at athletics first, then programs, and then staffing?
Yeah. Well, maybe for a program, one or the other may impact, when you take a program sometimes to staff that is associated with that. It certainly would be a combination of those steps. I wouldn't, I just wouldn't rule out one versus the other, but one very much may be attached, likely attached to the other.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Deneen.
So again, Dr. Adley, Rich, thank you and the administration for all the continued hard work on this. Could you just clarify a little bit on the operating reductions, RC1, the parking fees? It seems like we're just kind of moving money around. We're still going to need that money for orientations, senior send-off, and memberships, correct?
Yeah, there are, there are senior activities that, that we would need to have funds for. I think there's a way of doing that with accounts that we sweep and so on. I think it's manageable. I don't think any, any student activities are going to go by the wayside here or are not fun things. That's, that's not the intent, but I can certainly understand the question.
Can I ask, oh, I'm sorry, four questions. Mrs. Stein, can you, can you hear us?
Can you guys hear me?
Very faintly.
But yes.
Okay, I'm going to scream into my computer. I have a concern about the student activity accounts. It's something we've talked about at length, needing to sort of have some, just learn what's going on with them. I'm reluctant to touch them in a crisis situation, because I think we need a bigger picture on student activity accounts. So in my opinion, that $10,000 or $11,000 to me, I just don't feel comfortable putting it up there. Can you hear that? Sorry.
Yep, we got it. Mrs. Ritchie. Mrs.?
About that, my mic. I agree, and that's the one cut that I'm really, I think, concerned about. And it's not a huge dollar amount, so if there's a way for us to keep it the way it is and keep, I'm, you know, I'm a little concerned, we're taking money that we usually use for all those senior activities, and then we're just going to be moving things around. I think I would be more comfortable leaving that one out of the, of the proposed cuts. Thanks.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you very much. I found the mute button. Just following up from a conversation last week with Summers and Dr. Klein, some of the radiation that's going to need to be done, and sort of figure out where students are standing, also taking into consideration what Dr. Summers said in terms of perhaps not making changes to the schedule, not going ahead with some proposed items that she had in mind for the start of the school year, because it would be too much. I have to go back to the add cut list and questioning or wondering out loud if there's a philosophy. I mean, looking at the different categories we have, as Deb just mentioned, I would hope that staff reductions are the last to go. But in terms of looking at programs, and I'll give an example, which is the, the project we had, the Lead the Way project, that's something we've never had before. That's a new initiative. I voted for it. I think it sounds like a great project, a great addition to STEM. But it would seem to me if this is something we haven't had in additive, would that be a program that would be cut before some others? Is that a consideration and how that would be looked at? In fact, the Board of Finance comes back and says we have to get to a number. Thank you.
Yeah, I think a clarification, Project Lead the Way has been in the district for a number of years now, but Dr. Adley?
Yeah. And seventh grade, we're looking at improving that program, so I just don't, I wouldn't see going back to reduce that, because to me, that's fallen under reductions of the programs for the kids. So it's been in place, we're trying to make this one level of improvement. It was supported by the board through the budget process, so I would advocate that we keep it there and not touch programs.
So I think, unless the board has...
Level of improvement, which was the new I was referring to, because we have something in it, we're adding to it, we wouldn't consider that before. Teacher cuts or other cuts like that. Or it's all, it's all a mix at this point, to be determined. I'm just trying to understand priorities, if we wind up having to get to a number.
I think my, my priority is, well, a big school system, almost like that, and just speak directly to the board. I think the position you took last week was the position to take, not to be touching programs that involve co-curricular, extracurricular, staff and/or otherwise for the students, and if we could work around that, what, where we, where the savings are reasonable to make and that we delineated, I would advocate that we do those and be reasonable about those. But I'm just not advocating for infringing any further into programs for students. And I think that's where the board left it. I respect at that point of view, and I actually agree with that point of view, and I would hope that we could, whether any of these individual items should remain on the list, I'm certainly respectful of the board's decision there. But I think, I would not recommend opening up all of these programs. I just don't think that's going to be necessary, useful, and in the best interest of, of all students in the district, I just don't believe that you want to do that.
Mr. Deneen.
Hi, sorry for my tardiness. You know, I'm sensing we're going back down deliberating the budget at this point, and again, I think administration, like everybody else, has to give us this priority list. I think that's what it should be seen as right now, nothing set in stone. We don't know the number that we're ultimately going to have to work to if we do get a cut or a reduction in the proposed budget. So I just asked my fellow board members, they use this as a, I think it's a great tool to go back to the Board of Finance, give some examples of areas if we have to reduce the budget where administration is kind of pointing. But I don't want to get down that, I think we talked about that wormhole of redeliberating the budget right now without an end.
Mr. Deneen, did I see your hand up? Nope. Okay, Mrs. McCammon.
Sort of picking up on both what Mr. Brown and Mr. Deneen said, I do agree that this is something of a, of just a bigger picture exercise. But one of the things we did talk about last week, and then I hope will be part of the conversation, is that also in terms of managing the mental health and the workload of our staff, that we do continue to take a close look at what programs we can truly do right now and what we do have to deprioritize. And I think we should hold that top of mind, both from a management perspective and a budgetary perspective. Because I do think that, you know, to the email that you sent today, Tara, with, you know, the reopening of school plans, we may need to upwardly prioritize some technological initiatives or some PD that has to do with distance learning, and we mean, and we may need to deprioritize some of our educational initiatives that can't happen, because we have other, we have to shift how we're working. So I just would ask that we keep that conversation top of mind, and understand that embedded in that programming number may be things that we can't do moving forward, because we have to prioritize new, new ways of working, or we have to go back and shore up curricular deficits that our kids have experienced. And I think we need to have a real conversation about those things at the right time.
So I would agree with Mrs. McCammon in the sense that part of my concern with this exercise is I think we really do need to look at what schools reopening is going to look like, and there's going to be a real cost associated with that. It's really difficult now, and to steal Chairman Zagrowski's learned words, it's hard to, there are so many unknown unknowns. And so I think, I think we, but I think we're going to really have to start looking at what that might be, because I think that is going to be a budget impact. I do think, though, Mrs. McCammon, to your question, Dr. Adley, is there anything that you currently see in this budget that you feel you cannot execute on at this time? I feel like what I'm hearing, like to Mr. Brown's question, you feel like you can execute Project Lead the Way, which dovetails with the Mrs. McCammon's question. If you feel you can execute it, then we're, but is there anything that you see in this budget that reaches Mrs. McCammon's concern, that we can't execute?
I don't at this point, though. It doesn't mean to say at some point down the road that that might not change. But I will say, I wouldn't want to go so close, so close to the bone that we don't leave any flexibility here. You could say curriculum, professional development, maybe you've got some, maybe you don't need all of that too. Well, I would argue that, I don't know what I don't know at this particular point. I would not want to, for instance, in that, in that those two categories, change things, because it provides some flexibility. Things like budget control, I would like to leave those things for flexibility, because clearly, depending on what we hear this week about things like summer schools and ESY and so on and so forth, I think there's a lot, we need to maintain the flexibility, at least the limited flexibility that we have.
So if I combine kind of where Mr. Deneen was, Mrs. Stein, and Mrs. Ritchie, we're really looking at this deferral list, and are there any concerns on this list? And if there's any other major concern, please bring it up now, because it will help package what we get to the Board of Finance. But is there anyone else who has concerns, either they think that are on this list or anything major off the list? Mrs. Ritchie.
I think my concern is more of a macro concern, and that is, there are clearly things that we have initiatives and programs that we have talked about at the board level and have supported at the board level, and I know that next year is going to be very unpredictable. We don't know what the opening is going to look like, we don't know what the expenses associated that, with that will look like. We don't know what school is going to look like. So I think from my perspective, we're going to the Board of Finance and saying, here's under these two scenarios where we can go. But I would like to request that we find out from the Board of Finance about the unknowns and what their level of support for the unknowns will be, because we know there's going to be unknowns. We're making cuts here, we're trying to get to their number that they want. But at the end of the day, I'm very concerned about all the uncertainty and what goes along with that for next year and beyond.
Hey, Mrs. McCammon.
I have just a small question, not a concern so much. But Rich, I'm hearing a lot about fuel oil, and if I missed it, forgive me, but is that something you looked at as part of this exercise?
So we do have a locked-in rate for next year for fuel oil, so assuming schools are open, we're not really anticipating a decline. We did budget less for next year than what we budgeted for this year, based on decline in consumption due to the switch to natural gas. But assuming schools in session for a normal school year, we, we wouldn't anticipate any reductions there.
I see another hand. I don't want to miss your hand if I saw it go up. I will say, I have a concern on the student activities fee, which is a little bit different than what's been discussed so far. My concern is, our, one, I think the board needs a full review of those counts, and I've said that now for, for longer than Dr. Adley's been here. So we need to make sure that happens, and I know that he will. My concern has been, what we've always told parents is, that's fundraised money that goes directly back to kids. And I'm concerned changing that practice in the midst of budget cuts, as if that was available, because it's, it hasn't been our practice. I'm not saying we can't do it, I'm not saying that, that it is not within our rights to do it. I'm just saying, we've always told parents that we do not put that money into the budget, because it's really a filter directly to kids. And so parents have fundraised, there was some controversy, even though it was the best accounting practice when we swept those accounts, but we still said this money goes directly for things related to students. I think saying now that that money supplements the budget is something different. So I can be convinced either way, but I raise that as a concern, because I do think that that's a significant change in practice, and it makes me a little uncomfortable, just because we're in a unique situation, but I'd be open to board member thoughts. Mr. Deneen.
I think we're, again, discussing specific items on this list that is a potential list. If we have a, if the board feels otherwise, it wouldn't go on the reduction list when we deliberated that later date. So, I mean, again, I think we're getting into detailed discussions of particular line items. Unless the board doesn't want to bring forth these line items, I think we should just let it go as suggestions, but this is not a list that we have to work off of when the final number comes in. Final number might be zero.
A final number could be zero, and I think that's a fair point, that no, no cut has actually been issued, no modification to the budget has actually been issued. I just, given that we have to bring forward a report to the Board of Finance, I'd like to just be, know where we are. If we really intend never to touch this, I don't want to leave it on the list. If everyone's saying, no, it's fair game, and it's something they're willing to look at as a suggested idea, then I think it's fine to go forward. It's the one area that's a significant change in practice to me, so I just want to make sure everyone feels that it is actually something that they're up for discussion on. Mrs. Stein.
Can you guys hear me?
I was just going to say, I definitely want to discuss it, it's, you know, going forward.
Well, I think to Jill's point, in terms of the unknowns and knowns and what happens in the fall, a few of the articles you've sent us talk about transportation when schools open in September. It could be, and I'm just throwing this out there, we may not even be charging if kids have to drive at different times. Who knows what that account is even going to look like in the fall? So to depend on that money, I also think is, you know, we shouldn't do that personally.
Mr. Deneen.
Look, I, I, you almost agree with everyone's comments here, but I think we have to take a step back from it a little bit to a couple of points made, in that the goal was for us to look at this and give recommendations as to how or what we would look at if we were asked to trim the budget a little bit. So I think we've done that. Do we need to have further conversations about some of this stuff? Probably. But I think to continue to go in the weeds does not serve the bigger purpose of, a review was done to see where we could be more efficient and where we could defer, and I give a lot of credit to the administration and the board for the conversation and the work that's been done. But I think we're there, and I think the big outlier is, which I think the Board of Finance and, and the First Selectmen would know and agree, is what are the costs going to be to get the school up and running, or to make up educational opportunities or special need stuff that needs to be done? So that's the wild card. But I think, you know, kind of mission accomplished in terms of a bigger view of looking at what the Board of Finance asked us to do.
Okay, Mrs. McCammon, did I see you raise your hand?
I agree with Duke. I think, you know, those outliers are going to be a big driver later on, and I think that's part of why we have to back up a little bit, to his point, and talk about the big picture. I think we know that we have a lot of costs coming down the pike. From a taxation perspective, this non-lapsing account is of, whether it's either an acceleration of purchases this year, or it's just moving money over into next year. I do think we have to ask ourselves, and we can come up with any answer, but we have to ask ourselves, in this environment, what do we need to be doing? We know that we have to plan for big expenses down the pike. We know that we're trying to run a school system with as much integrity as possible, and we know that we have a community that is looking at some, an economic downturn, and maybe living that personally. So I just do think that the purpose of this was to make sure that we are doing our best to squeeze as hard as we can, not, Dr. Adley, that you didn't do that going into this budgetary season. But I still think there are probably some other questions that we have to keep asking. I think, Rich, thank you so, so much for the tremendous work you've been doing, clearly since you hit the ground. I think seeing your list of efficiencies is really, really exciting. I think it's really difficult to answer this question in a short period of time. There are some things, like the student activity account, that may have policy implications that are difficult to answer in a short period of time. That said, I, I think we just still have some, I'm not sure we're finished with, with the big picture work.
So do you have suggestions, Mrs. McCammon?
Well, my first suggestion was to look at what we won't be running this year, or what we may not be able to do next year. My second suggestion might be that we might have to go back and dig into those deeper, we might have to be willing to make some policy decisions. I would hope that we would make this as easy as possible. I think that maintaining the health of the school system is critical at this time for all of our families. But I guess I'm, I, I think we might have to look at, at some of the areas, that's, it's a good question, do I have specific suggestion? I think we have to look harder. Maybe we have to look at athletics, not right this minute. Maybe we have to look at extracurriculars. Maybe we have to look at, you know, things like the textbooks and adjusting our purchases. But I just, I'm asking whether or not we've met the goal of really trying to bring down the tax burden and prepare financially for what's coming.
Mr. Burke.
To Mrs. McCammon's point, I think that we have, I think we've done all we can do at this moment in time. I mean, I think there are a lot of balls in the air, a lot of scenarios that may play out that we'll have to consider later, that will affect how we look at programs, but I don't know what more we can do at this point. If Board of Finance comes back with a certain number that we have to cut, I mean, that will tell us where else we may have to look and what choices we have to make. But I think that's putting the cart a little bit before the horse. As I said last week, I think we've delivered the work product we were asked for.
Okay, Mr. Brown? Dave, you're still muted. Dave, you're still muted? He's saying, hold please, if you can't see him. Did anyone else have a comment while Dave is figuring his technical? I think he went, he logged out to get back on. Mrs. Ritchie?
It's just a question for Rich. Just, when do you think, do you have any more guidance in terms of when we'll find out about the renegotiation for the first student contract?
I spoke to their regional manager last week, and he reiterated his hopefulness that he thinks this is going to work out, but he hasn't gotten final approvals from his side, so we're going to keep hounding him this week, so hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, Dave is trying to restart, so we're going to keep going, but he gets first in when he gets back. Mrs. McCammon. Mrs. McCammon, you're still muted as well.
Sorry, talking to my kids. I had a question for Dr. Adley. I know that a lot of the towns around us are facing a similar issue and are looking at cuts to their, both, both town-side budgets and education-side budgets. Alan, what are you hearing from other superintendents who are dealing with this issue? How are they responding?
So different times skin things differently, whether it's capital projects or whether, I think it's fair to say, Rich, you can confirm this, that most of them have access to a non-lapsing account. But it just depends how people actually, what they're counting in their operating budget, what they're counting in their capital projects, and just how they, how they...
how they manage those different parts of the budget. But yes, people are, people are experiencing the same type of challenges. I do think the majority of our surrounding towns have access to the non-lapent account, Richard, if that's not correct, you can tell me, but I believe it.
So only, only Westport and the Dirk currently has it, though I believe Ridgefield and Weston are petitioning for it.
I've spoken with Ridgefield and Weston, they're both, as far as I know, requesting it, and I, in our Dirk, I think that's it, and then Norwalk also has
Norwalk, Stanford, Brookfield, and Newtown have it in Fairfield County.
Yeah, and I think there's some more around the state that have just been approved recently. It's kind of like as board chairs report, so I will, I will try to collate that and get it, if I can, to the board.
So it, it also doesn't have to be a non-lapent account and percuting. It could be a, this could be something that is exceptional for one year. I would say just overall, but pitching this where we have pitched it, and just to use round numbers, over 300,000 over the first estimate for the Board of Finance, but under 600,000 basically for the second estimate, is a firm and good faith effort to meet the, the request or the guideline. And I, I just would hope that the Board of Finance too would look at that in that capacity and work collaboratively in that capacity of seeing that as a good faith effort, not going further, either because they don't like programs or just, just the need to actually go further than that. And I think it's also trying to be very, very respectful to the taxpayers of the town.
Mr. Brown, you're back, I think. You're up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we have, yeah.
Thank you. Rich, just following up on that, and I, I guess my time was good. So you have scenario one and scenario two, in the capital deferrals and the difference between the two and the non-lapsing account. Long story short, I guess the 650, 7250, which would consist of the technology cameras, replacement VR59. One way or another, we want to get that stuff, and we want to get that this year, we don't want to remove those items. It's just a question whether they can be put into the lapsing account or not. There's no idea to remove those, it's just a question of how they're funded, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So things like the cameras and the textbooks and the iPads, the recommendation is to go forward with them, whether it's through the non-lapsing account or not.
Okay, so we're, we're not actually cutting any of those as the proposition?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a, just a wee follow-up called to Jill. Jill, one of the comments my peers made, and I'm not sure who, is that their district is going to be unrecognizable from what it is now, if they have to go forward with the level of cuts they're making. And so I think people are feeling, and that's within a, that's within a privacy of a superintendent forum and not tied to public, so that's what people are feeling with, with some of the extent of these reductions. And honestly, I just don't think that's where we're going to be or potentially need to be.
So, I mean, I think that, I would agree, I think we've done a good faith effort. I think that we're in a, a situation where we need more guidance at this point, kind of, we need to know whether there's a modification or not, whether a non-lapsing account is something they're interested in pursuing with us as not, because that's both voted the Board of Education and the Board of Finance to establish one of those. But I think, and again, I'm open to thoughts on this, I think this proposal meets the request that we were asked to do. Is there anyone who feels that there's something to, to add, or there's something that's missing? Because we do have to, we, we owe it to the Board of Finance, they've asked for us to get it to them by May 6, and I'd like to respect that, that timeline. Mrs. McCammon.
I just have a clarification. When we talked last week about looking at capital, we talked about looking at a couple of years out, understanding that this economic cycle might not be just one year in duration. Did you, when you talk about those deferrals, did you rejigger, Alan, sort of any thinking about whether, how you could manage that years down the line, or did you really just look at the next year?
We just, we just sort of looked at the next year, but the, the main reason being Jill, it's just, it's a wee bit of a, it's not a shell game, I have some wrong terminology, but it depends what the, it depends what the town is willing to bond, whether it looks right or not right. So it just depends how you want to, how you want to present that, but it's like an unknown factor to some degree, as to how they're going to package things together, of how it looks long-term.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
So, uh, uh, just real quick, the items I just mentioned, the, the cameras and the iPads, those aren't available for bonding, or do we have an ask in the BOF if that's an option?
So typically, and Dr. Alan, Dr. Adley, you'll be jumping in, but typically, all those things don't have a lot, a long enough lifespan to be, the town looks at under bonding.
Thank you.
Uh, Dennis, sorry, Mr. Maroney.
Now, circling back to, to our, our famous Rumsfeld quote of known knowns and unknown knowns, and unknown knowns. By the way, happy May 4th to everyone, may the 4th be with you, just, we have to group that out at some point. Question, question to Rich or Dr. Adley, is with these unknowns of what it's going to, what it may or may not cost to reopen schools, has there been any rumblings from other superintendents and/or the state or federal programs to support schools for doing so?
Can you just clarify for doing, doing what, Dennis, exactly?
Uh, remediation of cleaning schools, of alternating days, is that all going, is that onus all going to be on each school district, or will, will some of that be supported by the state or based on what the guidelines come down from, from the states and the federal government?
Well, the CARE Act does give us the opportunity to potentially seek reimbursement for some of those things. I don't know of any other clarification around, the CARE Act has actually come forward, Rich, I don't know if you know of any more verbiage around that or not, but potentially, we have things that are available for reimbursement under Title I. Richard, you just got blacked out there.
So no, no clarification in terms of how that'll work, whether it'll be a reimbursement to the district for items they incurred during closure, or if it'll be like a block grant where funds are delivered to the district? Right now, it seems to be unknown. The only thing they, they said is they would allocate the funds based on Title I.
So I did hear too, that in terms of FEMA, just some districts are tracking expenses in an effort to apply for FEMA, so we have to look at that a little more closely, what funds we could apply for, what would be eligible, what wouldn't, and what that process would look like. So Mark McEwen on the town side would be our contact with that, and I did reach out to Jamie to get his name and introduce myself virtually, so we can maybe talk, I'm just not sure, you know, everybody will be applying for FEMA. So what we get, what's applicable, it'll be interesting, but, but we'll be on that as well. However, I think Mr. Maroney still raises the big, you know, the biggest question, a couple of us have hit it, hit on it, the, as we, as we look at all these scenarios, the scenario for the Board of Education is what does it take to reopen schools, what is school going to look like? And I think everyone can agree, it feels as if it will look very different, and what funds would be necessary to make that happen. And that's where I would agree with Dr. Adley, cutting too close and not having some of that flexibility could, could put us in a very difficult situation. Mr. Sini.
I was just going to add, it sounds like we will have to be in communication with the Board of Finance often as we address these unknowns going into the next fiscal year. We're all, this is all new to everybody.
Um, I saw another hand, I'm sorry. Mrs. McCammon, is that you?
Yes, I was just going to tweak your comment a little bit, Tara. I, I do agree we need flexibility, but I think that flexibility is not going to come from our budget as, as stipulated necessarily. We're going, we're going to have to figure out how to pay for a new school environment and how to pay for compensatory services, and we have not and cannot budget for that today. So I think we, that's, we need to be clear about that every time we speak.
Any other thoughts? Okay, so what I'm hearing is that this report, we can send over to the Board of Finance, and then we will look forward to working with them on May 12. As a board, we're going to have to look at how that looks like, because we actually may need to caucus as part of that, and, and how to do that over technology is interesting, so we're going to need to start thinking about that. So, but everyone is comfortable, this is the report that we'll hand over from the Board of Finance, from the Board of Education to the Board of Finance as requested. Yes? Run down the line, I see all nodding heads. So Mr. Maroney. Miss, Mrs. McCammon, I'm going to go as I see you.
That's fine.
No, I'm not voting, I'm just taking a scent, I want to make sure everyone gets a chance in it, it's hard because the screen flickers. Mr. Brown? Okay, Mr. Dineen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ritchie? Mr. Sini? I saw thumbs up before, but yep.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Stein? And Mr. Burke?
Transmit it.
All right. Um, thank you, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Stein, so moves, Mr. Dineen, second. Is there anyone who objects? Seeing none, thank you all, that passes, and have a very good night, enjoy with lots of nice weather.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you to the parish, have a good night.